To order. So, good evening, good afternoon, actually. Thank you for joining us. I'm calling this meeting to order. Today, we do have two items on the agenda, and we will start with our first item, which is the Sound Transit Strategic Plan. Hi, Jim, thank you for joining us.
All right, thank you, Council President Perez, and good evening to everyone. Let me first start by sharing the presentation. Scroll to the right place here. And this discussion, of course, comes with the new challenges presented by the COVID-19 outbreak and its impact on the economy, in particular for Sound Transit, sales tax revenue, which accounts for 60% of its operating proceeds. Hopefully, though, there will be also new opportunities with the CARES Act enacted by Congress, which provides the state of Washington about $700 million in federal transit administration grants, of which Sound Transit is expected to receive about $170 million. That's something we'll get more details upon, and hopefully, some of that revenue can be used for some of our priorities here in Renton as well. With that, let me go to our priorities that we're working on with Sound Transit. And first of all, to the I-405 BRT-related issues, also known as STRIDE, is what the service is going to be called. As you've heard before, we've been talking to Sound Transit and emphasizing the importance that this will be a light rail station in the future, and we want to ensure that the station design, which is only about 10% right now, you see some conceptual pictures of it to the bottom there, left to the right side. And it's only about 10% now, but we want them to be looking at it as a future light rail station, and to demonstrate that that's going to be possible to incorporate into the future. To date, they've pretty much have told us that that's possible to do, and have shown us some examples. They've done it in South Bellevue, for example. But we also reminded them that their initial footprint, that some of those stations ended up being too small, and they had to actually take up more land. So that's why we emphasize that this is, seems to be the time that we should be looking at where light rail is going to be going into the station, so we can preserve land around the station, because it's currently 14 acres available, public land around there. So we need to be thinking about how this will be integrated into the future light rail, and making sure that we don't build something that's going to be in the way. There is some good news on that front, though. I think we've emphasized enough, Sound Transit now, that they are looking at scoping the 30% design of the station, and they've assured us that they will discuss incorporating some light rail planning into that. And we actually can follow that also, because this contractual contract that they're going to be working on has to go to the Sound Transit System Expansion Committee sometime in June or July of this year. So we'll be following that closely, and if we can't convince staff, we'll have an opportunity to go before that committee ourselves and make our case to make sure that that's incorporated into the design of the station. Moving on to the next key priority is to emphasize transit-oriented development around the station. They have a conceptual drawing there where Sound Transit will have some vacant land, which they want to be a TOD development at that particular site. They want to make sure that they include Renton's vision into that TOD, not just look at a specific singular Sound Transit purpose, but look at their overall vision that the city of Renton has for that area, which is yet to be defined. The community economic development group will be leading a planning area spending for TOD planning in that, in this 14-acre area, and also included, actually, even a bigger area in Renton Village, all the way over to the Old Sam's Brook site, for TOD development. So that's something that we want to emphasize with Sound Transit, is to make sure that they participate in our process. We're also inviting Metro and WashDOT to participate, because Metro operates the park and ride, WashDOT owns the park and ride. And that actually also gives us a new opportunity with WashDOT owning the park and ride. They're actually developing right now a new pilot program. They don't do a whole lot of transit-oriented development currently, they're just drafting up for it, and they're doing a pilot program right now for Kirkland, that we hope to gain some more information about how they could help us with developing this area for transit-oriented development. That's something we'll want to look at as we look at our 2021 state legislative package, what type of things we should be asking the state for as far as TOD development in this particular area. Also, one of the other major challenges we have on this site is actually traffic. This is the only station that's offline off of I-405, the rest of them are inline stations. So it presents challenges of getting to and from this particular station. We've been emphasizing some solutions to WashDOT and Sound Transit, in particular along SR-167 as they get off the freeway. So far, we haven't seen a lot of cooperation in some respects. We're certainly working well together, but we just feel like they're just trying to minimize the adverse impacts to traffic and not really make improvements. And I think for this station to be successful, we want to have it, you know, via, for transit riders, it's all about speed and reliability, so we need to actually make some improvements to improve the speed and reliability getting to and from the station. We are escalating this a bit to higher levels within WashDOT, and even Councilmember Prince has volunteered to ask, well, fellow board member Roger Miller of WashDOT, to emphasize the need for improving traffic to and from the station to minimize time for transit riders. Scroll up here a bit and move on to the next station that will be developed in Renton, and that will be the I-405 44th inline station. We really have no concerns with this one, it's certainly going to be really very nice to have an inline station at this particular location from a transportation standpoint. There are some concerns, of course, though, with the need for structure parking. At this point, Sound Transit only has enough money to build a circus parking lot here. I think their budget was $15 million, and they recently have told us it'll be $30 million. They currently don't have the budget to actually build structured parking for the location. They have been working with the property owner, the Panavote site, which is Alkin, and trying to come up with solutions to build a joint parking garage at this particular location to hopefully lower the cost at this particular location. And at this point, it's, we're waiting here back from them on their joint design for a joint parking garage. We'll just have to wait and see how that works out, to see if it drives down the cost. The other thing we might want to pursue, though, is stimulus money to make, to fill the gap that Sound Transit currently needs. That may be an uphill battle, but we'll have to see how that unfolds. And of course, for Renton residents, one of the most important issues is the Sound Transit 3 light rail study, which is in Sound Transit's current package. And we've been emphasizing the need to start early. Main thing is to start the process and have our projects in their long-range plan before ST4 is developed, so that we can make sure that our priorities are put forward and the new package is put forward by Sound Transit. In our last conversation with Peter Rogoff, we actually met with him there, he is emphasizing that we could start potentially too early and make some, you know, assumptions that may not develop by the time that they actually build Sound Transit 4 on the ballot. We had been thinking potentially 2024 might be the next ballot measure, but Peter Rogoff has emphasized that it's more likely, the earliest, to be 2028. The reason being is that Sound Transit 3, for example, they were over 50% included with their improvements in Sound Transit 2 before they started the movement. And so his planning, he thought, you know, it would be too early to begin now with Sound Transit light rail planning, something, of course, we'd like council members to input on and feedback on what they think if it were right enough. Peter Rogoff, I did put together a little bit of a schedule of what this would look like, if we followed through and started thinking more about 2028 as a ST4 ballot. So design would continue, we're in 2020 right now, '21, '22 would be the design. And at the same time, the community and the development department would also be doing the TOD sub-area planning, at the same time, the station design is to be occurring. Then, of course, construction would begin on the new station, and for our section, the two stations we have would be completed in 2024, and all of the south end of STRIDE would be operating in 2024. But we've just recently heard from Sound Transit, some of the north, the north STRIDE improvements, including improvements along 522 for BRT, will actually be moved into 2025 when they're completed. But our particular, it will be completed, up to 2024. And looking at this schedule, we would start planning for the light rail study in 2025, have a probably two-year process for that, and then there would be a Sound Transit long-range plan update to make sure that our projects get in the plan, and then there would be a system plan that would be developed in 2028 for the 32 voters. Now, I'll just mention a few other key priorities that we're working on in Sound Transit. Just in this last year, Sound Transit worked together a grant program and put out a call for projects for system access to a lot of these stations. We submitted a multuse app along 7th to get access to the new transit station, and it actually ended up being one of the highest-scoring projects in the east side for this particular call for projects, with by far over $2 million, and the board elected to only give us $1 million of the $2 million we needed for that project, which we thought was, was really unfair, to only give us half of what we asked for when other projects that were scoring less actually got their full amount. So we've been trying to get the additional $1 million. Board Member Prince would be helping us make sure that the next call that they do on what's going to be the system access funds that they're going to be having a call for, or the specific project funds from the station that we've been able to access. But it's something we would like to make calls, that particular project with $14 million. Another thing that we've been emphasizing with Sound Transit and with WashDOT is just coordinated communication of these projects. A lot of times, we've got the public, and we don't bring the other partners along, we've seen that in two cases with WashDOT and with Sound Transit. So we've been emphasizing to them, we need to have a coordinated front with public when we go out to the public, and have a consolidated message, otherwise, it looks somewhat disjointed if we don't do so. The other project that we want to get into, that long-range plan that I talked about a little bit earlier in the little schedule, is the north aid direct access ramp project. We want that into the Sound Transit's BRT long-range plan. And that's a project that we gave the state legislator some money, about $25 million, I think it was, for a design and right-of-way for that particular project. So we'll be looking eventually for construction funding for the direct access ramp into the landing area. So that's a key priority, to make sure that's in the long-range plan for Sound Transit. And then finally, it's just, we'd like to see Sound Transit become a little bit more involved in the service part of the system. So far, most of their planning efforts have been towards building up the capital improvements, and we'd like to see more coordination with the local service providers through the county region. And with that, I think that concludes my presentation. Council President Perez?
Thank you, Jim. I very much appreciate this presentation. So, Council, this is a strategy, strategic plan meeting, so I will take any comments or questions that you have.
Madam President?
Councilmember Ha. Yes, I, I am, this is encouraging and disappointing at the same time. The delay to 2028 is kind of heartbreaking, and this is kind of off the beaten path, but just from a brainstorming perspective, has, have, have we ever, in the meantime, so this is what would be an in-the-meantime kind of a question, have we ever looked at having passenger rail on the Renton spur?
I think that had been looked at way back in, it's 1996, when they did the first sound move, I think there was some talk about putting passenger rail along that particular corridor. It never was pursued, that I'm aware of, mainly due to the fact that Boeing needed that for freight, because like, they mainly did that. And there was also, at that time, they still had rails going through the Kingdale neighborhood, and I think there was a lot of opposition to running passenger rail along that particular
So if BNSF and Boeing coordinate already on the sounder rail...
Well, I mean, Sound Transit and BNSF, yes.
Yeah, I wonder if it wouldn't be worth just having a discussion, especially because that does run from our Boeing facilities, right past Southport, right through the landing, right through downtown, and eventually makes its way all the way over to the Seattle Boeing. So, I just, it's just a...
We'd like to bring that up, yes, we definitely want to follow up on that.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Do any council members have a question or a comment?
Council President Perez?
Councilmember McKeever?
Yeah, so I don't get bogged down too much on that timing of 2020, 2024. Is that a, they've 100% decided, or are they just thinking that's likely at this point?
More of a conversation with Peter Rogoff, and kind of picking his brain from this standpoint on what's happened before, and what is more likely to happen than before. So it's more of his opinion that since they're only like 10% to the current plan, you know, by 2024, they're not going to be far enough along, where there's probably even a consideration for a new plan at that time.
The reason I ask is, I had actually heard the other direction, which is because you have so many stations opening in that exact same year, that that could be a benefit to running in that same year, and that would be why they might pursue it that early, and that there might be an appetite to be fulfilled on it.
Yeah, that, that, I wasn't actually in the meeting, but that wasn't the conversation, I don't think, that Peter, that wasn't the justification he was using as far as, is mainly when the program is far enough along where it makes sense to start a new program, because there's certainly some concerns with being so early in the ramp to start some new projects going in.
Madam President?
I don't recognize your voice.
This is Doug Levy, I don't know if I'm muted.
Yeah, 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 yes, you are, you are, Doc.
So, I was in that meeting with Mayor Pavone, and what I would share on the 2024 versus 2028 is, and I think Jim may have alluded to these percentages, but when Sound Transit went to voters in 2016 on the ST3 ballot, they were well over halfway through delivering all of the ST2 measures. So what, what Peter Rogoff said is that because there is so little that's been delivered from all the taxes and bonding under ST3, it could be very challenging to ask for additional taxes and additional bonding for an ST4 when much of the ST3 would not have been built out yet. He said, obviously, that's going to have to be a board discussion, but, you know, that was definitely where he was seeing things trending when he met with the mayor and myself, and Councilmember Prince, I think, was briefly in that meeting as well.
Madam President?
Councilmember Prince?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think what, if we, if, if Sound Transit went out too early, and it failed because we hadn't delivered enough from ST3, it would be at a detriment to us when we're trying to get our, get light rail on the ballot for, for us. So I think, and we'll have a conversation about it as a board, probably sooner than later, and I'll make sure to keep you guys updated on it, but I honestly, and in light of everything that's happening now with COVID-19 and reductions and having to go fare-free, I think that we'll know more sooner than, we'll know more in a little bit. But I wouldn't look, I wouldn't look at that too much, 2024 versus 2028.
Thank you, Councilmember Prince. Any more questions or concerns?
I have one more clarification I'd like to make, if I could, Madam President, and that was, this is Doug Levy. When, when Jim was referencing the $170 million that Sound Transit's expected to get under the CARES Act, I want to make sure we distinguish relief from the current impacts of the outbreak versus stimulus package kinds of ideas later. So the $170 million for Sound Transit and the other transit agencies in our state is more toward relief of all of the impacts that they've taken with service going all the way down to de minimis. And what we would look to do with a future stimulus package is, I think Jim was outlining, some of the things we think might make a lot of sense to work on in concert with council, the capacity needs at 167 and 405 to move bus rapid transit into the station, the structured parking at 405 and 44th and the like.
Thank you, Doc.
Madam President?
Councilmember Corbett?
Yeah, well, I think, I guess, so I'm, you know, digesting the 2028 versus 2024, but, but overall, I, I guess I appreciate that Sound Transit is going to work with us to make sure that that planning occurs years prior to Sound Transit 4 going to ballot. And to me, that's the most important element of this, is that we don't have a, Sound Transit 4 suddenly come up on the ballot, and, and our, our light rail design is too immature to actually put it on the ballot. So that's what I really want to avoid, no matter what. I think, you know, as, as long as we're, as long as everybody's on the same page there, and everybody understands that we need to have this planning done before, before there's, there's more funding for Sound Transit, and we are part of the next measure, I'm, I'm okay with that, and I'm, just, I just want to make, make sure we continue to work with Sound Transit so that we stay, again, years in front of the ballot issue.
Madam President?
Councilmember Prince?
And Randy, there's not been one conversation that I've had with the folks at Sound Transit where Renton and light rail have not been a topic of conversation, so...
Okay, excellent.
It's still, it's still out there.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Ed.
Councilmember Prince, I do have a question, and I don't know if you are, or maybe Jim can, can, can answer this. Do you have the feeling that the board of Sound Transit understand pretty much that our residents in this area feel that south King County, specifically southeast King County and Renton, were left behind during ST3?
That is, I, you know, I can't, I can't accurately answer that question, because it's not been the topic of the conversation. Everything that we've talked about regards to ST3 has been about stuff that's right in front of us as far as the planning for stations and whatnot. I will tell you that the first conversation I had with Peter Rogoff, we, we had a conversation about Renton and light rail, and how important it is to our residents, and so he knows that. As far as my other board colleagues, I'm not sure what they do or don't know.
Thank you, and I very much appreciate your answer. And the reason what I am asking is because I, I want to know if they, that they will be supporting us when we bring these measures and the need in this area to, to include us this time in the future projects of the Sound Transit, to bring equity in the regional area about transportation services.
Well, I will tell you that I'll be working with all my colleagues, I've developed a good relationship with most of them that I've met in the three months I've been on the board, to make sure that, that we're not forgotten or left behind.
Thank you very much, I, I pretty much appreciate this. Before I ask other questions, does any other council member have any more questions? Okay, so I will bring another question, which is the first topic that you talk about, Jim, which is the, the, the area where the Transit Center is going to be located. Obviously, it is a key area, because it's the entrance of the city of Renton and the end of the 167, and obviously, I'm very much concerned about the kind of traffic that we're going to bring to that area. You say that you have had conversations with them to help us to mitigate this. Do we have more plans specifically that we are going to be bringing to them, or they are going to bring to us, or studies to see what is going to be the impact of this in that area?
Yeah, they're, they're doing lots of traffic studies, and they, the area that we're really concerned about is the area, the 167, as it moves up to Grady Way coming off the freeway. And as anybody that's experienced that, there's a lot of people getting off the freeway and trying to leave over right of way, get over to left turn lane, to go to areas like Walmart or just go westbound on Grady Way. And we really feel like a barrier curve needs to be installed there as a very minimum to that was merging things from happening, and that would just be a minimum, and we really struggle to get WashDOT to agree to that. And what probably needs to happen even more so, though, is then to be looking at improvements, which they claim they don't have in their budget right now. That's where Doug was kind of alluding to, that we really need to come up with maybe dedicated bus lanes to that particular area, to get people to and from the station. And that's an area that, you know, that potentially we could come up with stimulus projects for, but that's the type of improvements that we think would probably need to be happening to actually get the best speed and reliability to the station would be dedicated bus lanes in that particular area. And that hasn't been discussed at this point with Sound Transit, who they still have their project for at this point.
And I also will be a little bit more specific with this question. My biggest concern is that we are going to be bringing traffic from other south cities to exactly that transportation site, so we are going to be having a, a, a big volume of cars coming at big hours to, to Renton, just because they want to reach the Transit Center. So I'm wondering if they are fine, looking for solutions to get, I don't know, park and rides or others in Covington, or other areas that they don't have to drive all the way to Renton to bring more cars to the city.
They are enhancing, I believe, the parking in other stations to the south of here, but I haven't heard about any talk of additional park and rides in areas like in southeast King County, southern places like that where people are coming to. At this point, most of the agencies are really emphasizing building more parking, getting more people into transit to access these stations. That's been their, more of their emphasis, and less about the park and rides and things like that.
Thank you, Jim. And once again, Councilmember Prince, this has to be a holistic approach, so I, I wonder if you guys have had this kind of conversation at the board level?
About, about parking in general, and parking and finding where places for, other cities for there to be parking structures?
For other cities, to, to other cities in south King County to be able to mitigate also their needs, which at the same time will be helping this area?
I know that, I'd have to go back through and look at all the projects on ST3. I know that they, I don't think there are any other parking garage, parking structures that aren't related to bus rapid transit and ST3, but I'd have to go back and look, and I can do that. But we've not even, we've not had any of those discussions yet, at least not since I've been on the board. And I'm sure as we dip down the line, I mean, I've been to two in-person board meetings and one over go-to meeting, and we haven't had any of those conversations yet.
Thank you, Councilmember Prince.
Madam President?
Councilmember Ha.
Yes, thank you. I, I agree with you, I think, I think it's not really a question of us needing to provide parking for the entire south end to come and use the new Transit Center. I agree with you that I think there needs to be some kind of shuttle system or something so that it's not all single occupancy vehicles coming up 167 and trying to get into our little Rainier and Grady parking structure, which is, I believe, supposed to be for our residents. So having a conversation about additional parking rights and shuttling, I think, I think it's worth having a conversation. Thank you.
And, so, I'm sorry, Madam President, and I will mention now, if you look at...
And I'm sorry, Madam President, and I will mention now, if you look at our current Transit Center and our current parking garage, that is currently, and I believe some years ago, we did a zip code study on the cars that were going into that. Most of those cars that were going into that, into that parking garage were coming, originating from outside of Renton as well. So that is, every parking structure you can find in the county has that issue. That's not an issue unique to us. Yes, we need to figure out what we can do to deal with it, but Kent's having that issue, Auburn's having that issue, every city in the county that has a parking structure has that issue.
And King County Metro is, is trying to address this issue with their rapid rides in particular, to try to get more and more people to use those for trips down to the station. For example, a rapid ride, line I, going through the south end of Renton, could be able to collect people along that particular corridor and bring them to the station as well. And so that's being done more so by actually King County Metro, in particular, trying to do different type of programs, like they call it, it'd be a program where people can actually call up a ride, like an Uber ride, and subsidized by King County or Sound Transit to bring people to the light rail station. So there are programs that are pilot programs out there that they're looking at, trying to get more people out of their cars and take transit actually to the stations to...
Thank you. Does any council member have another question? Okay, Jim, when is, I know that now with the whole thing about the COVID-19 and the, and that the budget right now, it's been reduced, reduced. What was the projection, the project timing that they will have ready this Transit Center and complete the study? I, I, I don't remember.
Yeah, they're still on, on schedule for our particular project. It was supposed to be completed in 2024. A lot of the infrastructure being built for us is being built by Wash Dot as part of the I-405, building the Renton projects. So a lot of the infrastructure, like the 44th interchange inline station will be built by Wash Dot. So a lot of it's being constructed by Wash Dot, and they're on the 2024 timeframe as well as Sound Transit. So far, they haven't told us if there's going to be any delays in our particular projects. There'll be delays that happen north of Bellevue in 522.
One of my biggest concerns is that they're going to have to start prioritizing which projects have they had, and if they have had that conversation, what, what can do that to make sure that our projects are not left, again, behind or put being on those priority projects that are going to be moving on?
Madam President, you kind of broke up for a second. Can you repeat what you said?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was, how are we going to be assured that our projects aren't effective, they have less funding? Is that what your question was?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I guess I, I can't necessarily assure, you know, I'd be up with the Sound Transit Board to make that particular decision on what projects get, if they had to have some type of funding constraints put into place. So I'm not sure that I'd be in a position to answer that particular question at this time.
And I would say, at this time, there's not, none of the Renton, there's been no conversation on any of the Renton projects and their timelines being moved. And that was before COVID-19. None of us know at this time what the impact of COVID-19 and what it's done to the economy, what impact that's going to have. But as of right now, as far as I know, there's been no talk about any of the Renton projects being delayed. And that was, I had a conversation with Peter Rogoff about that last week.
Thank you, Councilmember Prince. And what I heard that you say, Jim, is that the plan for the BRT, as far as we're concerned, is still on the schedule?
Except for north of Bellevue, in Bellevue, the land with that particular segment won't be operational until 2025, so it's not with now. And then segments of 522 BRT are delayed to 2025.
Thank you, Jim. Any more questions? So, okay, so are we clear right now? What are the priorities that we have for Sound Transit? So Councilmember Prince could advocate for those priorities? Is that, is, I don't know, Jim, if we have like a list or a, or a, I don't know, a proposal? Or what are the main things that, that right now we want to make sure that are on that table at all time?
Yeah, I think we've got pretty much in this particular issue paper. I guess the one thing that I'll follow up on is if you would like us to explore with Sound Transit, the potential for heavy rail along the currently in the subtractions, so you could add that as well. If that's something you want us to look at as a key priority or not?
This is, Council President, this is Valerie Halloran.
Yeah, Councilmember Halloran.
I just want to make a clarifying statement on Renton spur, if that's what you're referring to, Jim, is it doesn't have to be heavy rail. It could be what they call diesel multiple units, which is more self-powered carriages like they have in Oregon and California. It's, it's called a diesel multiple unit, and it doesn't require a, I'm losing my words here. It doesn't require an engine. The engines are onboard the carriages. So it wouldn't be considered heavy rail. Thank you.
And Jim, can we make sure that, because they're probably going to be cutting on funds and all the time we are talking about that we, you know, we have been projected, protecting since day one, the quality of the BRT and as well as the, as the quality of the parking lot. That's also a priority, that, you know, they deliver the projects to be as effective as they should be?
Sure.
Madam President?
Yeah, Councilmember McGurven?
Yeah, I, I love the idea that Councilmember Halloran put forward. The only thing I would just want to make sure that's in there, and I believe this was within her intent, is that was a, an interim solution to the long-term vision of light rail, if I understood correctly, versus this instead of that. And if that's, that's the case, I think that's fine. I would, the only thing I want to make sure we make clear is that, you know, we don't start asking for this, and it's similar to BRT on 405, that that's what we get instead, if that's not what we want long-term.
Madam President?
Councilmember Prince?
I just, I want to be clear, because we're talking about this being a priority. We are asking Sound Transit to do something that's right now in, not in their book of business for Renton. And if that's what we're saying we want to do, then that's fine. I just want to make sure that I'm being clear that that's what we're asking for. Because right now, they don't do that. They run the sounder train, they do the express bus, they do the light rail. If we're saying that we want them to do something on that small, that spur in Renton, I just want to make sure I'm being clear on what we're asking for.
I guess the alternative would be to actually include that, this type of work, and when we do the light rail study, we could be looking at that as a, you know, a potential interim solution.
Okay.
Rather than ask for, right at this time, is potentially as good as a study to look at it when we're looking at light rail, is this an option we could look at?
Madam President?
Councilmember Cormen?
Yeah, yeah, I, I like, I like the idea too, Valerie's idea, but I am really concerned, having, having been with the I-405 Executive Committee all those years and seeing how the, the BRT, which was supposed to be the interim, you know, sort of turned into the, the plan for Sound Transit, I, I really want to say I am concerned about what Mr. McGurven expressed, that we, we might accidentally have this, you know, something on that line become the, their, their target. And the problem is, using that, that existing rail spur line, you know, there could maybe be four trips a day or something before it starts interfering with the freight for, for Boeing. And ultimately, we obviously want a light rail that does 10-minute headways, so, so we, I just would want to be pretty careful. I think maybe the way Jim suggested doing it, I, I think it's, I think it's good, very good to be resourceful and every single opportunity to, I, I think Sound Transit would share our interest in looking at every opportunity, but let's do it in a way where we don't jeopardize the, the main prize, which is to have the, the BRT functioning in 2024 and then not too far after getting the light rail line.
Madam President?
Councilmember Halloran?
I agree.
Thank you. I think the, the most important message here is that, of course, we want services that are effective for our residents. Obviously, our residents are very disappointed with the result of the ST3, and I think we want to hear them, and we, we do know that our community is asking for more public transportation, that as a city, we have been building around the idea that eventually we will be encouraging them to use massive transportation. So the whole purpose of this basically is that we are on top of this, and we are going to be working very collaborative with all our, the agencies, understanding this is Sound Transit is different than Metro, just for our constituents. And, and that Councilmember Prince right now is in that table, bring the voice of Renton, and that we do have priorities, that we are going to be working to make sure that they are taking in consideration. Now, say that, I have been hearing what your concerns are, and I do understand that this picture is looking completely different because the budget cuts and as well as COVID-19 has put us in a position that is not as strong as we were expecting. But as long as we are working very hard to, to always have the same level of services that other cities are receiving in the area, I think we're going to be in the, in the, in doing the job that we are being elected to do.
Madam President?
Councilmember Cormen?
Yeah, I, I had another thought as well, which is that if, if it does turn out that that 2028 timeline actually is the timeline for Sound Transit 4, I mean, that's obviously eight, eight years away, and hopefully COVID-19 is in the rearview mirror by many, many years at that point. And, and 2028 actually gives us four more planning years, actually probably gives us about six more planning years than I thought we were going to have, that I thought we were going to have to raise to try and get something in 2024, because I'd heard rumors of that. But where I'm going with this is, I think we don't want to, I mean, the, the idea of going from the Rainier Grady new Transit Center on a spur line is really good, but I think if we're talking about a 2028 timeframe, we should also at least leave the door open to having rail go, you know, planned for the whole up the east side at that point. Because we're talking eight years away just for the planning. And, you know, this area is going to keep building out. So I guess I, I don't want to, I don't want to burden Councilmember Prince with, with asking for the moon, but I guess I'd also ask him to, you know, to, to, to keep an eye, to not accidentally close the door, because maybe Newcastle and South Bellevue start making a push to get the line, you know, coming all the way from Tuck Willa right up the east side. And, you know, we should be there saying, yeah, we, we like that idea too. So for however we can keep that, that is a possibility. I think that would be worthwhile.
I agree with that, Randy.
Yeah, thank you.
I know we're running out of time, Madam President. This is Doug Levy. Can I make a quick comment on the, the?
Yes, yes, please.
I, I think we'll have to talk with Sound Transit about what is even structurally doable and where there is existing line that can even be used. Remember, that's the, much of the line that had been used on the east side has been purchased for the east, east side rail port or what we call east rail. And I think Councilmember Cormen accurately noted that even in that BNS section through Renton, there is, there is some usage for, for freight for Boeing fuselages. So there may not be a lot of viable commuter rail options up and down the east side at this point. Obviously, something we can check, double-check with Sound Transit staff.
Madam President?
Councilmember, I can't see, Cormen, Councilmember Cormen. I cannot see you guys because it's really small screen, but thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah, Doug's right. I think the, the rail line, the east, east rail is probably not going to work for, for that. I guess I don't know. I don't want to close the door on anything, but I also want to be cautious about what we ask for. But I, I did want to say that when the, the 405 Executive Committee talked in terms of BRT and that BRT was an interim solution, the, there was acknowledgement, and I, I thought it made it into the formal plan, but if there, if there was going to be a rail on the, on the east side, the consensus was that it should be down the, the 405 median, down the middle of the 405 is a preferred, you know, location, that all the cities thought was the right location. Now, I know it's easier said than done, but, but just so everybody's kind of coming from the same place. And, and I will say that I think by 2028, you know, Newcastle will really be almost demanding that.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Councilmember Cormen, for bringing that, because I do agree with you. I do remember that this was to be an interim solution, and I do, do want to consider to, your idea of bringing the light rail all the way to the east side. And Doug, just to let you know, I had had this conversation about the, using the east side rail corridor, and the reasoning behind that they keep using as an excuse that because we're not going to use the east side rail corridor, that it's not a corridor for us. I, I have debated this with them several times, because if they are able to bring light rail everywhere, I mean, I'm telling you, everywhere, west, south, east, across a lake, how come they cannot plan for a light rail from Bellevue to, to Renton and from Renton to Bellevue? I mean, they're supposed to be very smart engineers, that they know how to do this. So I'm just putting it out there because I'm fully supporting the idea of Councilmember Cormen. Do I have any other council member that have a question or, or, or an opinion or concern about this topic?
Yes, Council President?
Councilmember Ban?
Yeah, I've been trying to raise my hands here.
Sorry, I cannot see you. It's in my screen, just, I, I cannot see.
I, I just first want to thank Jim for his presentation, and, you know, this is very helpful, and I understand it's frustrating as far as the delay time, given COVID as well and, and the funding. But just to, for us to not get off track, I think with the priorities that we want Councilmember Prince to advocate for us, I think this paper really illustrated, you know, the key priorities. And, and I appreciate Jim kind of laying it out there for us all. So that's all that I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, do you have any more questions or comments? We have 10 minutes before I have to, I can go to the next item, which is an executive session. So, or Doug, do you have any more to share with us? Doug Levy?
Uh, no, no. Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Venedetti, do you have anything to, 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 to add to this conversation?
Do you have anything to add? Only a thanks to, Jim, thank you so much for putting this together. The, the page really does outline a lot of, of what it is that we would like to see. Thank you. And like everyone else, I am disappointed with the 2028, but it is what it is.
Thank you, Councilmember Venedetti. So Jim, you did a very good job putting together this, this, this presentation for us. I will suggest that we move this, if the rest of the council, not move it because it's not a motion, but I will suggest that this conversation keep being a topic on the Transportation Committee, if the rest of the council members are comfortable with that, and if the Chair of the Transportation Committee would like to do that. Okay?
That was a yes.
Yeah. I can see that you have been doing so for a long time, because you know to do a lot of things that I don't know how to do. So, so... So with that, I don't know, do I have an attorney on the line? Could I go to the, to an executive session right now or I have to wait until 6 o'clock?
All right. We can go to executive session now. We'll just need whoever's facilitating the meeting to invite us into a separate room. And I'll just, I'll just say for you here that the purpose of the executive session is pursuant to RCW 4230-110 subsection 1I to discuss with legal counsel potential litigation.
Okay, so I will make a motion. So I move that the council resays into executive session for 40 minutes to consider potential litigation, RCW 42.30.110, number 1I. We will not be taking a final action and the committee of the whole will be adjourned when the executive session ends. Once again, thank you, Jim, and everybody else. Second. Thank you.